Like to call this board work session to order. Like to welcome everybody that's here to listen. I do want to, before we get started, let you know that our meetings are open. However, we address have public expression at our monthly meetings on the first month of, or first Monday of every month, and that's when we take public expression. Today's meetings will not have public expression. And so therefore, it's your pleasure to sit there and listen, but we will not interact with you. And I ask you not to comment. If there's any interruptions, just to let you know that we will ask you to leave the meeting. So at this time.
Madam Chair, personal privilege. During the meeting, during the part of the meeting that is going to be the formal meeting, I am going to move that we suspend the policy to allow individuals to speak. Because I think it's a hot button issue. I think there's people here and that want to speak, and I think it would be good for us to speak. So I just want you to know that I will be making that motion.
And Emma, could you?
And you'll address that at the time.
Okay. All right. Moving forward, we will have Carol reflect on the minutes that all board members are present. So I will not be taking role. And first up, we have Dr. Linker, who's going to have up for us.
At this time, I think we have Dr. Silvernail on the call.
We did.
At this point, Dr. Silvernail is going to address the board on issues with the COVID issues, where we are in Pitt County. He has some state information as well, and where he sees the situation, the current situation is COVID in Pitt County. Dr. Silvernail, you there? Dr. Silvernail, you there? We had a mute button pushed somewhere.
Yeah, I'm here. I'm near Ethan.
All right. Thank you, sir. You going to share your screen?
I can do that.
All right.
If you all gave me permission. Yep. There we go. You ready for me to begin, Ethan?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Make that full size. Good afternoon, everybody. Nice to be with you today. Sorry, I wish it was under different circumstances. But let's, let's talk about COVID-19 and where we are in Pitt County. Here, so COVID-19 in children. I wanted you all to have a picture of how many cases there have been, both in the state and in Pitt County. So I pulled these numbers. These are based on the updated state data that was in on Friday. They don't push out their day-to-day update until around noon time. And since your meeting was at noon, I couldn't put the today's numbers in, but these are from Friday. In the zero-to-one age group, there've been 11,000 cases in the state. Zero-to-two, 15,000, closing in on 16,000 cases in the two-to-four-year-old age group. In the five-to-nine-year-old group across the state, 31,007, so almost 32,000, 32,000 cases. The 10-to-14-year-old age group, 45,220 cases statewide. And in the 15-to-17-year-old age group, 38,425 cases statewide. In Pitt County, we've felt much better amongst our children. We've had 203 cases in the zero-to-one age range, 316 cases in the two-to-four-year-old age range, 726 in the five-to-nine-year-old age range, and 1,032 in the 10-to-14-year-old age group. And then in our 15, 17-year-olds, we've only had 816 cases across Pitt County through last Friday. If we look at COVID deaths in children, again, these are statewide numbers. In the zero-to-one age group, there've been no children to die in that age group from COVID. Two-to-four-year-old age group, no children have died from COVID in that age group. In the five-to-nine-year-old age group, there have been two pediatric deaths or two children that died. 10 to 14, nope, no children have died in that age group. And in the 15-to-17-year-old age group, there's only been one death. So three pediatric deaths below the age of seven, at 17 or below, across the state. In the 18-to-24-year-old age group, which takes in mostly our college graduate-age students, other than 21 deaths across the state. In Pitt County, depending on which part of the website you look at this morning, one part has us at 100, one, one part has us at 95. We have 100 total deaths in Pitt County, and we have not experienced a death below the age of 50 in Pitt County as of Friday morning. Moving on, I want to show you the COVID-19 outbreak or epidemic from, from various perspectives. This is our epidemic curve as a stacked bar graph by age. The zero-to-17-year-old group is this sort of yellowish or gold color. You can see that at the week of June 19th was really our naydeer after the spring wave. And then we began to grow and had even, had growth in the zero-to-17-year-old age group. All of the last two weeks were, were pretty, pretty level. We've seen tremendous expansion in our 25-to-49-year-old age groups, or that young adult worker, with some expansion in our 18-to-24-year-olds, and then some expansion in our, our older workers, or more mature workers, the 50-to-64-year-old age group. Interesting that we've seen a little bit of a bump in our 65-to-74-year-old group. Again, most of the new cases, 85% to 90% of new cases, depending on which source you look at, are in unvaccinated individuals. This is testing across Pitt County throughout, throughout the epidemic. And I wanted to point out to you that we have tremendous testing capacity in the county. At the height of the pandemic in January, or height of cases in January, we did the better part of 10,000 tests in one week. The black line represents percent positivity. See how that has ebbed and flowed with the course of the epidemic, and most recently climbing very rapidly. Also, this is maybe not as, as good of an indicator as it was at the height of the pandemic. With smaller sample size, day-to-day variation can skew this up. But nonetheless, it's still climbed and climbed very rapidly. It would be considered an indicator of increased COVID activity in, in Pitt County. This is hospitalizations across the Viden system throughout the epidemic. So this is March of 2020. This is first wave, second wave, third wave, spring wave would be fourth wave. And here we are into the Delta wave. You see very steeply how hospitalizations had climbed. This is the weekly report I get. So this data is from last Tuesday. The good news in this graph is that ICU admissions have been relatively flat. They did rise a little bit through the big fall and winter surge, but have remained relatively flat. And even with, with the Delta wave, are still at relatively low levels across the Viden system. This is a report from the sequencing lab at Brody. You can see where Delta was starting to appear towards the end of May, beginning of June. Clearly had a foothold by the middle of June, and then has significantly grown through the last sequencing report that was available. And I will point out that there is Delta, and then there are two subtypes of Delta in that mix. But, but out of 90, 93 out of 98 samples were of the Delta variant. So 95% of our sequencing is showing the circulated, predominant circulating strain to be the Delta strain and its subtypes. The COVID reproductive number, while this remains unclear, the state meeting Dr. Cohen has suggested that for Delta, it may be as high as one to six. This means that one case can generate six new cases. If this is correct, this is a very steep geometric expansion of cases, where one case becomes six, six become potentially 36, become 216, become 1296, and so forth. So very, very rapid spread, rapid growth, potentially in a, in a non-immune population. In Pitt County, this is kind of the little report card I do and, and show from time to time. And I did not bring one back because it, the last time I talked to you was really about a year ago. And a year ago, we were in a much different place. Over the last 14 days, Pitt County has seen 1,208 cases. That's a case rate of about 6.5 per thousand individuals in the county. That is high. If we went back to that low spot in June, we were at about .7 cases per, per thousand in the county. So less than one case per thousand in the county. Our total cases, 22,511. That's about 12% of our county population that we know to have been infected with COVID. Of those cases, we would estimate that 21,203 are recovered, or 94% of them. Our fatalities at this point stand at 100. Again, I'll point out that this morning, before the state finishes its update in two different places, there are two different numbers, one being 95, one being 100. If you take those numbers and calculate a case fatality rate using the 100 fatalities, you come up with a case fatality rate of 0.4 or 0.44 unrounded. So about four times as lethal as flu, which is reported as 0.1 across all age groups. And our percent positivity this morning was 16.2% in returning tests. The state has quietly said that there are much more COVID out there than we can count. And I think many of us have always suspected that. There's been a antibody surveillance program that's been run through several of the major universities, including ECU, to test the seropositivity, meaning the antibodies of individuals in, in the community. And when the state was at about 10% in what we could count from positive tests, the seroprevalence or antibody level was at 25% of the state. So the state is quietly behind the scenes, although I guess Dr. Tilson did report this to county managers and county board chairs recently as well. It's saying that we have about two and a half times as many cases as we thought we did. So where we thought we had 22,500 cases, we may have, if that 2.5 number holds in Pitt County, as many as 56,278 cases. And that would essentially cut our case fatality rate in half to 0.17 or 0.2 with the rounding. So only about twice as lethal as influenza is across all age groups. Want to move on, just briefly report vaccinations to you. At this point, as of again Friday morning, new numbers were not out prior to the start of the meeting. 86,804 individuals in Pitt County are partially vaccinated, representing about 48% of the county. 80,120 individuals are fully vaccinated, representing 44% of the county as a percentage of population. So we're not quite where we'd like to be. But again, having almost half of our county vaccinated is, is a, is a far better place than we were last year. To mask or not to mask? As you were aware, the following entities are all recommending universal masking in the K through 12 setting. The Centers for Disease Control, the American Academy of Pediatrics, the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. And Governor Cooper himself had sent out a letter last week to, to school superintendents and school boards regarding masking. My recommendation to you is, I guess the one thing that, that helps shape that recommendation, the masking and quarantine of students. If a student is exposed and both parties are masked, the student is not required to quarantine. This will help keep kids in school. So my recommendation for you is to start the school year with masks required for all students, faculty, and staff when indoors. Allow Dr. Lanker and myself to develop guidance for sports individually, as the risk varies from sport to sport. For the most part outside, transmission is reduced, and masking would not need to be in place in outside environments. When the numbers improve, that masking policy can be relaxed. And I'm happy to review those numbers for you or with you or with Dr. Lanker every 30 days moving forward. And that's the end of my formal remarks. Happy to take questions.
Perfect.
Dr. Silvernail, this is Worth. And I have a question in regards to the number of cases of students in the flu deaths compared to the COVID deaths in, let's say, kids zero to 17. Do you have any data on that? Because, you know, I have read where the, that the flu affects kids more detrimentally than this COVID in those younger age groups.
I did not pull flu death data for this morning. In Pitt County, in, what's the last year I had data for, probably 19? I believe we had had one flu death, and I believe there was one flu death early in 2020. And with COVID, we've seen no, no deaths in Pitt County below the age of, of 50 in Pitt County.
Okay. That's what I wanted.
Caroline. Hey, Dr. Silvernail, thank you so much for your presentation, especially for highlighting the data. Just had one question. My recall, you talked about the reproductive number. Could be as high as six, could be, but that, that's what Dr. Cohen is saying. In terms of the number of people each person infected with COVID passes it to, basically, transmits it to?
Yep.
If I recall, the previous variants, Alpha, and I'm not sure of the others. They had numbers originally, before they got names. Was that around two? The average was around, the reproductive number was around two people were, were infected with COVID for every one person identified or diagnosed with it? Is that right, with the two?
Yeah, Caroline, the early estimates in this range from two to four. Many of us thought that the reproductive number with the original strain was actually less than that. Hard to calculate sometimes, especially in an ongoing epidemic with a new, a new infection. But the original estimates did say two to four, so, so yeah, that would be correct.
So you would say this one is likely to be more transmissible in orders of magnitude?
Yes. Yeah, definitely, definitely more transmissible than the original strain.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Benji.
Dr. Silvernail, this is Benji Forrest. How you doing?
I'm good. How are you, sir?
Doing good. Appreciate everything that you're doing and being a part of this workshop today. I, I just got some questions I want clarified a little bit. Is it fair to say that kids under age of 10 are far less likely to spread the COVID disease?
Yes, we believe that, that the children, prepubescent children, children say under the age of 10, are less efficient at transmitting it. It doesn't mean that they can't, but on average, they are less able to spread it than more adult children are, you know, adolescents and young adult children.
Dr. Silvernail, is it fair to say that there's a fair amount of natural immunity from prior infections, say in the school system currently? And, and, and would you talk a little bit more about this antibodies level? Because it sounds like it could be a lot of antibodies, a higher percentage than what maybe the data is showing.
Yeah, officially, and, and this is one of the great, you know, rubs of COVID, if you will. Nobody is talking much about natural immunity. And it's likely that natural immunity is at least as good as vaccine-produced immunity. There was a study in, at ECU, it was called the Compact Study. But that was part of a larger study across the state involving both Duke and UNC. And there might have been another partner in that as well, where they recruited a cohort of individuals in their service area. So ECU obviously recruited a cohort across Pitt County and Eastern North Carolina. And they did ongoing testing for active COVID, and they did antibody testing for prior COVID infection. And the findings coming out of that study suggested about 25% of the community has had COVID infection already. The state epidemiologist, Zach Moore, Dr. Zach Moore, revealed that on a statewide call a few weeks ago, forgive me, in COVID time, the, the time is all a blur. And then a couple of weeks ago on another state call, Dr. Betsy Tilson told us, and, and recently told county managers on a call she jumped in on with the county managers, that for every case that we've counted, there are actually probably two and a half cases out there, which would, so our numbers are probably two and a half times what they are in terms of individuals infected in Pitt County.
Right. Dr. Silvernail, would, would you say it's, and I don't, you know, you, you, you tell us. Is it fair to say that children 17 years and younger are at a lower risk?
Oh, absolutely. COVID in terms of the, probably the single biggest risk factor for a severe outcome with COVID is age, and then throw on medical comorbidities. And the younger you are, the more likely that COVID is going to be a mild illness for you as an individual. Low risk does not imply no risk. There are some younger individuals who become quite ill with this. So it's, it's not a guarantee.
Right. Dr. Silvernail, I'll just ask one more question. Because I know there's others on the board that would like to speak. Is, is it fair to say that there's proper ways of wearing masks and improper ways of wearing masks, where some things could be more effective than others?
Yes, sir. The mask, well, well, every, let, let me say, everything that we do is imperfect, whether it's testing, contact tracing, masking, the vaccination is imperfect. There certainly, when it comes to masking, a properly worn mask is more effective at reducing an individual's ability to transmit the virus than an improperly worn face mask.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions around the table for Dr. Silvernail?
I have one more.
Actually, Caroline raised her hand.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you, Melinda. Dr. Silvernail, it's Caroline again. Did you review the ABC study in which Pitt County's employee, Pitt County Schools, student and staff data was included from last year, which I believe showed a less than 1% chance of transmission of cases by children, by students in our schools with masks required?
I haven't seen that, Caroline, but I do know the transmission was very, very low in Pitt County schools last year.
And the other thing I wanted to follow up on is, I have... Do, do you know if the antibodies generated from the previous variants protect people from the Delta variant?
The antibody, the variants and, and the sequencing is interesting because, you know, we, we don't do this much sequencing with other viruses. So from a generation-to-generation standpoint with viruses, we don't know how much they change for most of them. And from an evolutionary standpoint, viruses will evolve to become more transmissible and less harmful. They're, they're designed to make copies of themselves in that facility. less harmful. They're, they're designed to make copies of themselves and that facilitates them making copies of themselves. So there's a pressure to become less, less harmful but more transmissible. As far as we know, that even with the Delta variant, even though the genetic sequence of the virus, virus is different enough to recognize it as a, a variant of the original strain, as far as how it looks to our immune system, it still looks about the same to our immune system. And antibodies from natural infection or vaccination are at least partially protective. And folks who are reinfected, uh, if they've had prior infection or those who have been vaccinated, um, and get infected, or both. And I'm, I'm aware of some cases in, in Pitt County where we've had individuals who had the disease, had a vaccination and got infected with likely the Delta variant, had very, very mild illness. So yes, vaccination and natural disease appear to have some degree of protection even against the Delta variant at this time.
But not 100%.
Nope. Nothing's 100%.
Yep.
And, uh, she, uh, Caroline asked a question that I was gonna ask in regards to the effectiveness and the immunity of, uh, the children. Let me, I, I can ask is, Dr. Silvernell, do you think there's gonna be any long-term impact in regards to students, you know, wearing masks, um, continuously putting, um, Purell or whatever on their hands? It's, it go, is there gonna be a long-term impact in regards to their immune system being suppressed and not being as strong as it usually is when students are, you know, um, exposed to all different kinds of viruses and colds? Do we see a long-term impact in regards to our students once we get through these, uh, variants of COVID?
I don't know that there's any data to support that one way or the other. I think it's unlikely that, that frequent hand sanitizing and wearing a mask now is gonna have long-term consequences for, uh, the individual. While students, when, when we're small, our immune system does need to learn the difference between friend and foe, and there could be some delay in that. But there's just not data to support a conclusion as to how good, how likely, unlikely or severe that is at this time.
I just know like when kids, for example, don't go to preschool or whatever, and you send them to school, their immune system seems to be kind of suppressed because they, many of those students come home with all kinds of colds, viruses and so forth. Whereas the students have, may have been in preschool or at, at a young age or daycare, seems as though they are not affected as much with these variants of, uh, different viruses. But I understand what you're saying, but are you aware of a study in regards to masks related to, uh, the Delta var, uh, variant? How, how effective masks are in regards to the, uh, Delta variant?
I have, I have not seen anything specific in print regarding that, sir, no.
Thanks.
Benji?
I just want clarification on something that Caroline asked. The, the study that she referred to, is that the study that Duke University participated in?
Who are you asking? Cause he didn't.
Either one.
Cause he didn't, he said he didn't read it. He wasn't aware of it.
Well, how about?
Yeah, the Duke, the, the ABC Collaborative, um, was actually, 11 school districts, including Pitt, were part of it. I think Dr. Silvernell has seen our data. He might not have understood the question as being part of the ABC, their, their findings. But I know Dr. Silvernell has seen our numbers.
Was there a control group in that study?
No.
Okay, thing, I'm sorry, Dr. Silvernell, I thought you might be familiar with that.
Don?
Dr. Silvernell, Don Rhodes here. Just a question on the flu versus, uh, COVID. Uh, long-term effects of flu, long-term effects of COVID on our young people? Can you elaborate on that any? Potential, I guess, potential long-term effects on Eva?
Well, and we generally don't see long-term effects of influenza. There are the so-called called COVID long haulers, um, with a virus that's been around for two years. Again, I don't think anybody could give you a realistic answer as to what that means for anybody down the road. Um, we do see a subset of, of individuals who with, with many infections develop protracted symptoms, uh, and those occurred with viruses before COVID and will probably occur with viruses after COVID. Uh, but I don't think there's data to give you a hard answer right now as to how many children who get COVID today will have symptoms in 20 years. The virus hasn't existed for 20 years. So nobody knows the answer to that question.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Dr. Silvernell. We appreciate you zooming in with us and giving us wonderful information.
All right. You're very welcome. Have a nice day now.
You too. Thank you.
Brief presentation.
Okay, Mr. Floyd or Mr. Dr. Ledoux?
Dr. Ledoux from Biden.
I want to thank everybody for, for having me here and taking this opportunity to just share my thoughts. Um, I wanted to give you a brief introduction of who I am. Um, I'm, my name is Dr. Matt Ledoux. I'm a pediatric ICU doctor by trade. Um, I'm also the chair of the Department of Pediatrics here at Brody School of Medicine. I represent the 80-plus faculty members in our department. I also am the pediatrician in chief for Maynard Children's Hospital here at Viden Medical Center. And really, my thought today, when I was asked to come and give, uh, my perspective was, you know, we all know that there's recommendations from the American Academy of Pediatrics, the CDC. Um, but I'm not sure, uh, you all are familiar with what's been going on, um, in our children's hospital, where we are, what we've experienced, what we've seen in children. And so I'd like to kind of give us just a little bit of history so that you know what's happened here in the children's hospital. So, you know, where have we been? I think there's some, there's a lot of, uh, information out there. Um, I think there's some belief that potentially we didn't see COVID. And I noticed that Dr. Silvernell had five different waves, but I'll talk about the one previous wave. We'll put that as one. And then when we get into talking about what we see coming, um, I think that's the Delta wave. So what I wanted to talk about was where have we been? That it is absolutely true in the children's hospital. So I'm gonna speak about children who were ill. Uh, there's a vast array of children who were tested positive. They had cold-like symptoms. They were out in our community. Um, and those are not the kids that I'm gonna talk about. But I'm gonna talk about the children that we saw in the children's hospital and the pediatric emergency department. So the truth is, is that we did not see acute COVID in the first wave. I think that was all of us, as we got nervous, as this came, we were preparing for the worst, thinking that we were gonna see all this acute COVID. And when I talk about acute COVID, what I mean is pulmonary disease, lung disease, um, that you see in the adult patients. And, and so, you know, looking back, I think, um, we, we, we were, we did not see those acute COVID cases. But what we did see in the first wave is something called Miss C. And it's multi-inflammatory syst, uh, uh, multi-inflammatory, uh, system in children. And what that is, is an inflammatory process that occurs weeks to months after the acute COVID infection. Um, and we saw, um, dozens of children with what we call Miss C in the hospital. Um, many of our kids required oxygen. Many of our kids required transfer to the ICU. Some of our children required medication to keep their blood pressure up. Um, a handful of our children ended up on ventilators with Miss C. Um, in addition to the lung disease that we saw in Miss C, they had renal failure. Uh, they had coagulation problems. And then a few of our kids here in our community ended up with tracheostomy tubes, with feeding tubes, and a long, weeks-long stay in our pediatric rehab facility. Um, and so I, I just want to emphasize that although the numbers aren't huge, there are children, our children in our community that have suffered from these, from these COVID infections. Move forward. I think what we need to talk about is where we are now. Um, and so this information comes from the data that we've been living and breathing for the, for the last, uh, year or more. Um, I think there's a couple priorities that at least I have as a, as a parent myself. One is getting our kids back in school. The second one is keeping our kids safe. What makes it different, what makes us pediatricians worry is the Delta va, the initial data that's coming out of the Delta variant is it's a different disease than what we saw in that first wave. So in the first wave, we saw the Miss C, very few COVID infections or acute COVID infections. That's not the case anymore. So if you look at some of the hotspots, I spoke to one of my colleagues in Florida, his ICU is full of acute COVID infections. Uh, just two weekends ago, they had a death of a child with pulmonary hemorrhage from acute COVID. Um, here locally, just in the last two or three weeks, uh, when we were not seeing, you know, months ago, we were not seeing acute COVID infections. We are starting to see them. And I want to tell you of two children without violating kind of their privacy. One was a teenager, someone that would probably attend one of our high schools that got acute COVID. She developed, got very sick very fast. She was in the ICU, she was on a breathing machine. And she had very severe pulmonary hemorrhage. For those of you who don't know who, what pulmonary hemorrhage is, it's scary. It's scary for the patient if they're at all awake. Um, it's basically when they bleed from their lungs and it's very difficult to control. Um, she survived. She remains in the children's hospital. We have another patient, an infant, uh, that came in, uh, mother, mother was positive and was born and suffered COVID, acute COVID infection. Uh, there's something that we do in the most severe kids in the intensive care unit, when they're, um, when they're sick, we put them on heart-lung bypass. It's a machine called ECMO. Uh, it's about a 50, 50% chance of survival on average. It depends on why you're going on, but about that. Um, we came as close, I think I was driving in to put the patient in on, on, on ECMO. So, um, our fear is that things are different with the Delta variant. We're starting to see it here, here now. The other thing that I wanted to point out was, um, capacity. And there was a lot of, I've gotten a lot of questions about, why are we at capacity? Is it because of COVID? The answer is no. It's not because of COVID. It's, COVID is contributing to it. But what we're seeing is, as, as, um, the graph, I wanted to point out this graph. I think it emphasizes a few things. So what this graph is, is data about all the different viruses. So each color represents a different type of virus. Um, this is not COVID, okay? So this is just multiple viruses, human metapneumovirus, paraindulento, respiratory syncytial virus, RSV, that we see a lot of. So what you can see here is, I think it answers one question. The big question is, do masks work? And the answer is yes. Look at the graph. So you can see all the viruses going along at a very high rate. The start of social distancing occurs, it's about April time, and you can see our viruses drop way down. And they're, they're, they're present, but they're much lower than they, they are. So, you know, not just masks, but what we did in total, right? So masking, um, social distancing, uh, quarantining ourselves, doing all those things. And then as we start easing restrictions, um, in late spring, you can see all those viruses come back. And so I think, um, there, there's a couple things. So one is, um, part of our capacity problem here in the hospital, uh, is like we're in winter. In winter, we're usually at capacity because we have a lot of those viruses around and our kids get sick from those viruses. And, um, and then if you add on top of that, um, uh, COVID, um, and, and those things, um, we're seeing that as well. And so, um, what we see coming. So, you know, I, I, I hope that, um, we dodge a bullet like we did last time. I think that a lot of the data is showing us that, um, it may be worse than last time and we need to prepare for that. Um, and like I said, the trends in some of the hotspots are showing that the kids are sicker, um, and they're being more affected than we saw in the first phase. So, you know, I think what, what, me as a representative of, of Brody and, and the hospital, you know, I think my recommendation is truly what Dr. Silvernell said, is we should go into the school year, um, when children are indoors and they're in close confined spaces to wear masks and be as safe as possible. Um, we're all, uh, my also, my recommendation is it should be re, um, um, it should be looked at periodically, um, looking at the numbers and looking at what's going on in our community. So, um, hopefully that gave, gave everybody some background about what we're seeing in the hospital. I'm more than open to answering any questions about, uh, what we've seen.
Does anybody have questions?
He answered my question.
He answered your question?
Uh-huh.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. And Brian Floyd.
Good afternoon. I'm Brian Floyd. I serve as the, uh, president of Viden Medical Center and the operations officer for Viden Health System of Hospitals. And on behalf of the team members, I want to thank you for allowing us to come today. I'm not gonna reiterate the data and stats that more experienced and knowledgeable people such as Dr. Ledoux have shared about COVID and its impact on children. But I just want to represent also the bigger picture associated with this that's real for us as a health care concern. I would not be doing my job if I didn't come and, and share with you some of the other implications that we're dealing with. Viden Health exists in Eastern North Carolina to provide life-saving care to almost a thousand patients a day right here in Greenville, North Carolina, as the most comprehensive resource for critical care in this region. We all have heard the statistics about the incredible size of Viden Medical Center as it being one of the nation's largest hospitals. It is in fact in the top 20 in its size in the United States. But that tells us something about our region. The hospital is large because we have a large disease burden in Eastern North Carolina, which I think we all understand. Over the past few months though, that burden is manifesting without COVID in increasing number of patients who are arriving in our hospitals and our emergency departments with an increasing acuity level, meaning their illness is, is worse. Might be a patient who has heart failure, who hasn't seen doctors during COVID, who now has decompensated. I hear that from our physicians a lot. The patients were just sicker than they were before. And we're starting to see a wave of them over the last few months that's increasing strain on the system from the capacity perspective. It shows up in terms of waits in the emergency department as the ED is full every afternoon with patients that are complex and require time to work through their disease process. It shows up in decreasing beds available for not only Pitt County, but also the region that we serve as patients are waiting to come into this comprehensive tertiary-level facility. And that's without really the Delta or the COVID issue. Then enter the story that you've heard from Dr. Silvernell and Dr. Ledoux on Delta itself. A more transmissible virus and a higher spread rate, um, that our data and as you've heard from the professionals today, is real for us right here in Pitt County. And what does that do? On top of an increasing acuity level, it simply strains that system more as we're now taking in patients who are being treated for COVID. We see it in the number of admissions that are going up. We see it in our emergency department visits of both Delta and COVID patients in addition to those I mentioned earlier, which strains the system significantly as we try to separate and deal with the complexity of dealing with this transmissible virus, uh, in the emergency department environments. It shows up in testing. And if you have driven by our testing site, uh, which I drove by on the way over here the last few days, an inc, significant increase in testing that's not actually showing up in all of our numbers yet because it's, it's fresh. It's just happening. Uh, over the weekend, lines were as long as two and three hours just to get to the COVID test. Um, today looks like it's gonna be the same story again when you look at the line of cars driving up for those tests. It also shows up in its impact on staffing. Our team members, physicians and staff are all part of the community as well. So with increasing spread, they're not immune to that. It spreads to them as well. And that leads to callouts. That leads to people who are in quarantine for themselves, uh, simply because the virus has exposed them as well. And that reduces our capacity. So it's the cumulative impact of both Delta, COVID, the pre-existing acuity levels of these increasing numbers of patients that raises our concerns and has, it causes us to have to take action when we've overwhelmed the environment. So the, the, the life risk or the healthcare risk that we are concerned about is not just COVID. It's what this phenomenon is doing to other disease process and other needs of patients who are brittle or in high need of healthcare. Long waits could equate to, uh, lives lost or risk, not just from COVID. I'm worried about the patient who's having a mini-stroke or stroke-like symptoms in the region that needs to be here, but the delays of getting in, in an overwhelmed system could cost them their life. And it's not about COVID. It's not gonna be in those mortality statistics necessarily. It could lead us to have to cap our beds or not have our beds fully available for the region, which has been happening. We've been on deferral for certain diseases. We've been on deferral for certain disease process for some time now. And if you are aware, other hospitals in the state are experiencing the same issue, which just means there's less capacity in North Carolina for certain life-saving care that patients need. It could and is leading us now to the state where we're having to have the conversation again about reducing non-emergent procedures and testing or elective surgeries and things as you might remember happen in the fall. And that happens simply because we don't have the capacity to handle putting more patients in there that aren't emergent on top of an environment that's, that's already close to being overwhelmed. So we're here today advocating for children and advocating that, that the children are protected as best they can be. But I'm telling you, I'm also advocating for you and your loved ones and families beyond COVID who need the system to work for them and not be so overwhelmed or not have team members who can't do this work because of spread rates that are in our community, which could harm us because we simply can't be as available as this region needs us to be. So masking is not the be-all, end-all of everything, but it is a tool at our disposal that might make a life-saving difference in a non-COVID situation as well. And I just wanted to share that perspective with you today. Thank you.
Did we have any questions?
I did have, I have a question. I just, I'd like to ask a question.
You want Mr. Floyd? Or the?
Yes. Well, I mean. Both of us. I would like, I'd like to know about the, when you say the Delta variant, how's that, is that being identified in the kids or in, in, in the individuals that are coming forward and with severe cases? Do you know whether it's the Delta variant or do you know whether it's the previous, you know?
Yeah, so I think there was a graph that Dr. Silvernell showed about the different variants and they were color-coded. And I think the Delta variant was a greenish color. And if you could see 99, I think it's 95% of what they're sequencing. So it goes through another test. So we test for the virus and then they take that sample and they run it through another sequencing to determine what the variant is. So they can't do that on every sample, but they're doing it on a large amount.
Large amount. So I just know people who are, are testing, they're, it's positive, they don't know whether it's the Delta variant. They just know that they have COVID.
I think if you asked us weeks ago, we probably would say, we're not sure.
Right.
Because it was probably 50/50. Now we can say we're pretty confident 95% of those are going to be Delta.
Okay.
Sure.
Carolyn.
Yeah, thank you both so much for your informative presentations, your expertise and your dedication to our community's health. It is, it's a big job and I appreciate it as a beneficiary of your efforts. I've worked at a community health center and we are seeing much frailer patients than we have seen in the past. I'm the compliance officer. I get calls all the time about patients basically standing, getting out of their car and not being strong enough. We're ambulatory care, ambulate means to walk, but there, it, it is really different than it has been prior to this pandemic. So I completely understand. It's all that is right backed up. Our, our longtime patients are, are much worse off. My question to you both is, Pitt County is home to three large educational institutions. ECU has tens of thousands of students. Pitt County, Pitt Community College has 20,000, tens of thousands of students as well, something like that. Both of those educational systems have chosen to impose a mask requirement. And as you know, that's one of the things we're here to decide on today. Do you think that the mask requirement for those two educational institutions will help Pitt County beat back this variant and the impact it has on, of course, their students, but also our healthcare system?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think we're taking every effort to try to minimize the effect on the community. I don't know that I articulated this one point. Masks are important for two reasons. The first reason that a mask is important is to try to protect myself from somebody else that has it. And, and you know, the data out there, we know they're effective. To what degree, we don't, we don't know. Like there's still studies that need to be done to be able to say that. But the other benefit is if I happen to not know I have COVID and I'm walking around and we all have masks on, then it's not considered an exposure. And that's really important for you guys to understand when it comes to keeping children in school. And I'll give you the example. If a kid comes in and like you all know, a lot of our kids are asymptomatic or have very mild symptoms, but they come into the classroom and no one wears masks, and then a day later it's found out that they had masks and they were indoors the whole time. There will be a quarantine who, for anybody who's exposed to that child. So teacher, students, whoever was in that classroom.
An unmasked child with COVID is what you're talking about.
That's right. So say the whole classroom is unmasked. And we face this in the hospital all the time, right? Trying to keep our workforce up and running. We all wear masks and it, and it's for those two reasons. Because if I'm working with a bunch of nurses and one comes down positive, I'm not considered exposed to that, to that person because we were all wearing masks. And so that individual, so if you're wearing masks and one child becomes positive, that one child will quarantine and be home and the rest of the kids can continue to go to school. But if everybody's not wearing masks or a vast majority of the, of the students are not wearing masks, anybody who's not wearing masks would have to, would have to quarantine. So I think keeping the focus on kids in school, I, I know we all have our own experiences, but we all know that in school is better than virtual for sure. So, so masks are, there's two reasons to wear a mask.
Anything else? I just want to say thank you for what you've done as far as Viden with providing nurses because I'm going to tell you, if we didn't have those nurses last year, we could not have stayed open. Those nurses, not only are they taking care of the wellbeing of our, our students on a daily basis that have diabetes and other kind of medical issues, asthma, what have you, they also require to be the, the contact tracing. And that's a really, really difficult job. So, you know, thank you very much for, for doing that. As well as when we needed vaccines, when they became available, you were willing to set up the clinics so those who wanted to get vaccinated could. So I just applaud Viden for partnering with the schools in providing, you know, the necessary needs that we have. So thank you again.
We're grateful to do it. And again, thank you all for just allowing us to come. We're only here to be a resource to help you have information necessary to make complex decisions. I hope we've been helpful in giving you something to think about today that might help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Does Karen have? Fancy. Oh, that's right, we do have a curriculum, sorry. Okay, so next on our agenda is the curriculum resolution policy discussion. Absolutely.
Just at our last board meeting, it was asked that we have a discussion on, on critical race theory and resolutions. I've collected some information for the board to look at, different policies from different school districts that already have a policy, a couple resolutions from a couple, from Cabarrus County as you see, plus a potential draft resolution that was just a start, at least to get the conversation started. Not sure where the board wants to go with this at this point. I think it may, may make some sense if the board wants to go with the policy committee start, taking these policies as, as where to start the conversation, but go from there. But maybe start with the policy committee and bring that back to this board. At least then it would be in your policies as opposed to resolution.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ben.
First of all, I appreciate the board today bringing this on to the agenda because I do think that it's a very important agenda item and a concern in the community. The thing that concerns a lot of individuals, at least in my section of the county, is that critical race theory, those social theories like that, especially that and the 1619 project is not somehow developed or incorporated into the teaching of the curriculum of Pitt County schools. We have done our best to assure the community that we don't have that in our curriculum currently, and that is true. The thing that our community continues to be concerned with however, is that there will be some teachers that whether it's in the curriculum or whether it's not in the curriculum, they will still use components of it to, to teach students. We've tried putting a statement out, assuring the community that we don't teach critical race theory in the 1619 project. That did not work. If, if it did, I certainly would not have suggested that we bring it back up today. And I've toured with the idea of what would be the most effective means. A resolution in and of itself would be, would be stronger than a statement because it would provide that this board would go on record in a voting capacity to approve something that would discourage that teaching in the school system. However, I also know that a policy, if written properly, would even have more effect because once somebody on staff or teacher would decide that they would on their own use some components of the theory to use as illustrations or whatever, or, or put in their own ideological spin on some lessons, then you would have a policy to back you up to say, no, you're breaking school policy. So I like the idea of a policy. What I, what I'm concerned about is that we write a policy that would be so watered down or so general that you really couldn't do anything much with it. So that, that would be, I guess, the concern I would have with, with, with a policy makeup of it. Especially when you've got, and we've got teachers that are employed by Pitt County schools that are members of the NCAE that is affiliated with the NEA and that they're using resources, money to develop curriculum and resources to provide for critical race theory. And that, that's, that to me is something that even though we don't offer it and even though it's not in the curriculum, it, it could provide that some teachers that are really politically slanted toward the, toward affiliated organizations that are promoting it would try to slip in in some kind of ideological classroom setting, teaching method. So I, I guess my, my situation would be, Dr. Linker, that I like the idea of a policy, I just like the idea of a policy that spells out what we're talking about and not just a generalized statement.
Anna Bear.
I, I couldn't agree with you more. I mean, I, I appreciate this being brought to our attention. It certainly is a concern in the community. But to your point, a resolution is helpful, but it's not enforceable. And so where a policy is, comes closer to being something that we can enforce. And I did, in response to knowing this was going to be on the agenda this weekend, I did it, or this, today, I did a lot of research this weekend or, or fact finding, I should, should say. And, you know, critical race theory and 1619 are broad, I mean expansive topics. And so I would welcome the opportunity as a board member to learn more about what is included because what, what some people consider components of CRT, other people don't. And so I need some, some additional help. I couldn't even begin to get my arms around it just over the weekend. I would love to hear, you know, differing sides on, on what constitutes critical race theory, what specific issues parents and stakeholders are taking issue with. I would very much like the opportunity to do that and then to look at, if it's the pleasure of the board, a, a policy determining what, what parameters we want to have, if any, around controversial teachings and where, how materials are used. I think also, I could use a, a little bit of a refresher course, I don't know about any other board members, on what exactly we have jurisdiction over in terms of curriculum and standards and things like that. I think that would be helpful. I think I understand where we have jurisdiction, but I want to make sure. So all that to say, I, I concur with what you're saying that, that I would appreciate an, an extensive amount of education for us as board members on the various theories on CRT, on the critical race theory and on what, what it includes.
And then Caroline.
Yeah, I agree. I, I think a policy is the way to go, but now the policy will not be any good if it doesn't have any meat to it. I, I know as a principal, I always felt like that I was, felt good when we had strong policies and I could always let my policy do the talking for me. And you know, it's, it's time that we no longer pat teachers on the back and say, don't do it again. We need to have something, some meat to it to make sure that, hey, there's a consequence if you move into this realm. You know, I did submit to the board, kind of a definition, so to speak, of what critical race theory is and what the 1619 project. And I, I got some of this information from the Michigan Legislature. But you know, I, with the critical race theory, I said it, it means anti-American and racist theories, reading guides, lesson plans, activities, guided discussions and other resources that promote that the United States is a fundamentally racist nation, that the United States Constitution is a fundamentally racist document and that certain races are fundamentally oppressed or oppressive. And then with the 1619 project, it means an initiative of New York Times that attempts to reframe American history by regarding 1619 as America's birth year. And this includes curriculum, reading guides, lesson plans, activity guide, discussions and other resources that promote 1619 project. And you know, we may, it may be put in the state curriculum, in our curriculum one day, that it needs to be taught based on funding, based on certain groups that are, you know, pushing this initiative. But I think we as a Pitt County School Board still needs to take a stand and say we don't agree with this type of curriculum being within our school system. Teachers need to know, as you said, they need to know exactly what we're talking about when we say we do not want critical race theory taught and we do not want 1619 project taught. I think the policy will be worthless if we just say we don't want critical race theory taught and we don't want the 1619 project taught without any type of guidelines that go along with it. And you know, it, it is something that many of our parents are concerned about. They're also concerned that even though we don't mention 1619, or that we mention 1619 project and the critical race theory, that it will be integrated somehow. I mean, this is a fear of the parents and we've got to help them understand that we're doing all we can to prevent it being put in and taught in a manner where it's disguised. And I think we as a board, we've got to take a tough stand. And we got to take a tough stand and we got to stand up to this being taught to our children because I don't believe our children needs to hear any of this. I know I don't want my grandkids taught that. And I'm sure there are many, many parents that don't want their kids to come home with a project that tries to belittle their race or promote another race because we're all equal and we're all made by God. And I just think that that's very important. But I do believe that a policy would be stronger than a resolution if it is strong.
Caroline?
I believe our teachers have been trained to use their professional judgment to choose how they teach the North Carolina standards. The North Carolina standards are put out. The North Carolina standards are put out by the Board of Education, Department of Public Instruction. It is, we have been reassured that neither sixteen nineteen or CRC are a part of the North Carolina standards right now. I actually trust those entities to take a good, hard look at what part of our history needs to be taught at different grade levels. You teach a five-year-old something different than you teach an eighteen-year-old. And those are the educational professionals who the state has put in place in a democracy, we are still a democracy, with lots of opinions being discussed at the state Board of Education level at least. So I feel very comfortable in supporting all of our teachers regardless of what political party they belong to, regardless of what association they belong to. I mean, I'm not hearing anything about associations forcing their members to teach a certain way. There is a lot of material out there on a lot of different subjects, and that's one of the things our teachers go to school for, is to pick and choose, using their professional judgment and training, what types of curriculum and materials they are going to use for those kids in their classrooms. So I've not heard any instances of any teacher in Pitt County moving lockstep in with some professional association and saying, I'm going to do everything you tell me to do. I've not heard of anything like that. Again, it's not in our, not in the standards, not in our curriculum. We have a Board of Education who, at the state level, who, with the DPI, manages what our standards are, and it's our professional teachers' jobs to use their professional, independent judgment, along with their peers and their groups and their grade levels, to determine what is the best way to teach these standards in Pitt County schools. I don't want to undermine teachers' professional judgment for that. I think it's really important. I mean, they went, they went to school for a reason, and this is one of the key things that they learned, was to be able to tailor the standards and how they're taught so that their students actually understand them. And they actually get evaluated on how well their students learned the state standards. They get tested on that and it reflects back on the teacher's performance. So I think we have a good accountability system in place, including in July, when we talked about, or I think it was our July meeting.
June.
June meeting, where we were presented our policy, I forgot the name of it, about non-political activities.
Seventy-seven twenty.
Thank you, go right ahead.
I'm just looking at it, let you know.
Thank you. And it seemed to me like it was a good policy in place that provided prescriptives about political, one way or the other, any kind of politics, type of activities. You know, we didn't hear anybody say that wasn't strong enough. Everybody at that time felt like that was appropriate, or at least I didn't hear anybody say that that was not strong enough. So I feel like we have a good system in place, you know. I don't want to undercut and make any teacher's job harder, frankly. I don't want to tell them how to teach the standards that they've been trained to know how to implement in their classrooms.
Madam Chair, I went back and pulled that, the study was called, what we got done in June was engaging in a partial study by Preston Bowles and a group of team there. Policy seventy-seven twenty, not to kind of be redone, it basically, it says the political activities must not take place during school time, involve school monies or materials, R number three, and that's the one that got circled on our presentation, make use of official school position to encourage or to encourage students or other employees of the system to support in any way a political party, candidate, or issue. So I believe we already have that policy there, but now I agree with it, we may need to put a little more teeth in it. So the policy's there. I don't know, reading into it, and I hadn't read it then, that the consequences, I'm not sure, are really there, but we all should know the consequences if you're not following a policy. So I don't know where we want to go on that. I think we already have a policy, we might want to build on that policy, I would suggest.
Mr. Tripp.
Thank you, Chair. I agree that we have a policy in place, and I know it's being talked about in areas of the community, but in my district, I don't hear it talked about. And then as Ms. Smith was saying, a lot of people don't even understand or know what these theories are. But I want to defend our teachers, Dr. Linker, and all, we have not had an issue with any of these theories being taught or tried or attempted to be taught in Pitt County schools. And I think we're going ahead of ourselves if we look at a, what do you call it, a resolution for something that we haven't even had an issue with in Pitt County. And I think our teachers are more professional than what I'm hearing we give them credit for as far as predicting what might be taught or what somebody might try to do. But as of now, I have not heard of anyone saying that any teacher has attempted to try to teach any of these theories in Pitt County schools. And we said before in other meetings, we trust Dr. Linker and we should trust those who are working on our policies to put together a good policy that will represent the board and represent all of Pitt County. I think we should have more trust in our teachers and what they're doing, and I believe they've been professional. If it has been an issue brought up, being that this was being done, then I think we should do some things that the board can vote on. But by it not being an issue, I think it's more of a political issue than it is an issue in our schools. Because you've said that we have not had any attempts of this even being done in our schools. So I don't see giving all people a chance to put a policy in place and make sure that policy is carried out is more important to me than it being discussed. Because I think most people hear about it in the news, they hear about it from the politicians, but here in Pitt County schools, I haven't heard Dr. Linker say anything about it being taught, or any teacher has been reprimanded for trying to teach it. And so I think we should leave it up to those who are making our policy. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I move, we move forward with developing a policy to prohibit the teaching of critical race theory, sixteen nineteen project, and those social projects associated with it.
If I may, we normally do not take up business in a work session, however, if it is the consensus of the board to do so.
Okay, that's good.
I think that, and it sounds like it is at least, there's concern, I think there's consensus, I could be mistaken, that Dr. Linker and I go ahead and take up the business at hand and work on a draft of the policy to follow up with the policy committee.
Madam Chair, she is exactly right.
Yep, that's why I trust her, Benji.
I was out of place.
Thank you.
And you believed it. Yeah, I was going to say, but I was like.
I'm so used to sitting in a board meeting and working through, working through issues through parliamentary procedure.
It's okay, it's work session, that's why I was like, I don't think it's that.
She's exactly right, that's what we pay her the big bucks for.
Amen.
Right. Okay, so you want to repeat that for us?
The consensus is for the policy committee to review policy, I guess, seventy-seven twenty, and see if it should be updated in any manner to add some additional language regarding the sixteen nineteen project, critical race theory.
Okay, and just so everyone knows, even though it's a policy committee, every member on the board has access to input for those policies, so.
Well, if it's a policy, it's got to be read twice anyway.
Sure does.
And I'd just like to add too, we had two additional policies that day that were discussed, policy fifty-two-ten and policy thirty-two-ten, that it cannot kind of be, if we make some kind of statement or whatever, they were there already.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Can I say, add one more point to that? Or has it got to be seconded or what?
No, we don't vote, we're not voting.
Well, I do think it's very important that we, that policy that you're talking about, Don, does it mention critical race theory and sixteen nineteen project?
And that's why we say.
But I'm saying, does that?
You can, you can add to that policy we already got.
Right, but does it say it now?
It says political viewpoints.
Political viewpoints.
And that covers that, in my opinion. I'm no lawyer, but.
It doesn't cover it, in my opinion. It needs to be, we need to have a definition of critical race theory and what it is in a concise manner that I think, you know, the policy committee can come up with, as well as it needs to include the sixteen nineteen project and a definition in regards to it, a broad statement. So that I, you know, the best way to keep teachers out of trouble is to have guidelines that they can understand and it's written and that they will follow. And we don't want a situation, we want to be proactive as a board, not reactive, and wait till something begins or assignments are written and then there, we have parents in here very upset. It's best that we go ahead and take care of it right so that there's no room for error in a situation.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make it very clear that I'm not interested in telling teachers how to choose the curriculum that supports the standards that we require them to teach.
Okay.
I got, yeah.
Madam Chair, just to follow up, Worthen, I do not disagree, but once we start listing items, that list is going to expand.
I think we can take this up to the, during the policy committee meeting.
But I still want to make a statement publicly.
Go ahead, make a statement.
And the statement that I want to make is in regards to, the reason why we're even talking about this is because the critical race theory has come to the front in regards to parents as well as the sixteen nineteen project. The political aspects that you have talked about, parents haven't said a thing about that. They've talked about these two issues, and as parents, we're listening to everyone else other than the parents and their, and how their feelings regards their kids. We need to hear, and I've heard from numerous parents regarding these topics. Really, it's been out there and I've gotten, you know, I've just heard a lot about it. And I think that we just need to take care of it, take care of it at the beginning so that we're not constant, it's not constantly being brought up over and over again.
Okay.
Being brought up in here.
All right, are we good?
Yes.
All right. Good, good conversations. And Emma will be at some point sending out when the policy committee will meet, because they need to be meeting soon. Up next is Karen Harrington, correct?
Yep. She's next door.
Okay. Good morning, afternoon, I think we're getting into afternoon now, afternoon, sorry. The morning went quickly. I am just here to review maybe a follow-up of some of the things that Dr. Silvernail and others have mentioned already in terms of quarantine. And again, just referring back to the toolkit for the guidance, I will say that we already have a meeting scheduled with Dr. Silvernail and Dr. Mosley-Williams for tomorrow to just get clarifications, as we always do as the toolkit gets updated, to follow up on making sure that we are all consistent across the county with our procedures. So again, in terms of the toolkit, one of the differences this year is that last year there was a whole separate booklet for handling cases, and now that's all been incorporated in the toolkit. And it was always in the toolkit, but there was a much more extensive booklet. And again, this is what we use to guide us. There was an update even since the last time I spoke to you on August tenth, and the only thing that they added in was some updated guidance for sports and outdoor activities, as well as they did expand slightly right here on the exposure definition. So if your toolkit does not have on the outside an update of August tenth, sometimes they will, they will do that and not let you know that they updated it, but one of our school nurses caught that as soon as we got back. So I will just start with saying that the importance, again, this year of staying home if you're symptomatic. And that is going to, that has been a struggle for all of us, including myself. When your kid has something that you're pretty sure is their allergies, with the way we are, you know, now, if you have any symptoms, our staff or our students, it's very important that they stay home. And so that is the very first thing, regardless of what components of here we're following, is that symptomatic individuals need to have follow-up with their healthcare provider and/or get a COVID test to determine their, the presence of their symptoms. And so again, it talks here about the symptoms that would warrant exclusion from school. And again, in children, we have seen last year, and, you know, with this new variant as well, is that their symptoms are generally mild or things like a sore throat or a headache or the fever. So again, those can look like other things and your pediatrician may be able to rule out COVID by saying that they, you know, finding strep or other things. And then anyone that is diagnosed obviously must stay home once they have that positive And then it talks in here also about the exposure definition, and again, we learned that last year, is that it is essential for those who are not fully vaccinated, which is a large portion of our children, particularly those under age twelve, to quarantine if they're in close contact with an exposed person. And the close contact definition would be, or exposure definition is close contact within six feet for fifteen minutes cumulatively within a twenty-four hour period. But as I emphasized the last meeting, the exception to that would be students who were masked. If both students in that exposure were masked, consistently wearing their masks, regardless of that contact, they would no longer need to quarantine unless they became symptomatic. And you do see that that exception does not apply to teachers or staff or adults. So that, those were the, again, the main changes. The other changes are that we do not have to do the screenings, we're not doing the temperature checks or the daily screenings, but it will be important, and I shared this with our principals last week, that we continue to remind everyone, if you have symptoms, stay home. And again, that's hard, especially our educators, we're used to coming into work with not feeling well and being at our best, but we need to stay home, we need to keep our children home until we get those things ruled out. We do still have to, you know, if we have an individual that is symptomatic, make sure that we're able to isolate them from other individuals in the building. Those restrictions are not quite as tight, but we still do have to have an isolation space that can be utilized until an individual is able to go home or is picked up. And then again, some of these other things on page fifteen, we will continue to do as last year. We will have, through Matt's department, plenty of PPE gear, wipes and sanitizer so that we can continue those. And then towards the bottom, again, it's just talking about when we have those, any confirmed positive case, we will first isolate, try to get people home, and then quarantine close contacts with the exceptions that I've already spoken about. So again, any vaccinated students or staff, if they are not symptomatic, would, even if they were exposed, be able to remain in school. But what I have been stressing with individuals is if you have any symptoms, even if you're vaccinated, then you need to, again, quarantine until you can get tested or get a note from your doctor saying it's something else. That also, those exceptions would also apply to anyone that has tested positive for COVID within three months or ninety days. Because again, we know that those individuals are considered to have antibodies for those ninety days. And again, we had some of that last spring. And then if students were masked, even if they were not vaccinated, we would be able to keep those students in school as long as they were not symptomatic. And again, we will continue to refer people out to either their doctor's office or the clinic, you know, over at Vident, as they mentioned, still has the drive-through that is operational. And then it goes into specifics for each scenario. I don't want to go through those with you specifically, but I am glad to ask questions. but I'm glad to ask questions in regards to any of those times when individuals would need to quarantine. And again, I hope I'm going, if, if I don't have enough detail, let me know. It's kind of become routine for me. So I, if I haven't answered all your questions, I'm glad to go through that a little bit more.
Okay, so for those of us who take in this information and it's overwhelming, and it is, let's do an example here. So for example, if we have a second grade classroom, for example, and there are 18 kids, something like that in there, and there, there's a mix mash of who's wearing a mask, who's not, and a child gets COVID, then what's the quarantine procedure for that scenario versus the same scenario where all the kids are masked?
So I'll start with if they're all masked. Then the only questions we would be asking about if they're masked, we would ask if they're masked consistently. And then we would ask about lunch. And we would also maybe ask about outside where, again, you don't have to wear masks outdoors. Was there any child that they were in close contact with, you know? So if they're running through the playground, typically then we would not need to. But if there were two kids that were huddled up together talking, then maybe one child is masked, you know, is quarantined. In the scenario where they are not masked, we would, again, be, it would be dependent on each situation. However, certainly anyone that was in six feet of that child throughout the day for more than 15 minutes cumulatively throughout the day. So if they are assigned seats and we know exactly it's these children right in the radius, then we would, might be quarantining, you know, three to five children. We'd also have to ask about lunch and how long lunch is and whether they are eating in the classroom or the cafeteria and what is the seating like. And then again, at second grade where we found, we probably, we quarantined more children at the elementary level because they go in groups. They go in a small group to read, they might go out for services. And then how much are they mixing throughout the day? Last year, they really recommended everyone seat face forward, three to six feet away. We are still saying, you know, assigned seats. But if we don't have all of that data about an assigned seat and who the child is with throughout the day, it could be that we would quarantine the entire class. So I don't mean to be ambivalent, but it really is a case by case. You know, if they, if they, if they don't have seating charts and they can't talk, talk about small group and all of those things, then it may lean towards more quarantines. But definitely a larger number than if they were masked, where it would only be if there were scenarios during lunch or outside where they were really close.
Don, did you have something you wanted to ask?
She pretty much answered the question.
Benji?
Ms. Harrington, thank you for your presentation and all. Are you familiar with Lincoln County Schools masking policy or their change in quarantine policy?
I am not.
I think they, they developed some amended policies so that, because they're, they're, they're having mask optional so that these quarantines would not be as restrictive as what you're talking about here. So that is possible to do.
So for my, so any, any changes to this toolkit that we would do would have to come through consultation with Dr. Silvernail. Again, throughout last year, we did have some things that were not directly in the quarantine, such as household exposure. We were doing that much before that based on his recommendation.
But I guess what I'm saying is there is that option to be able to look at a county like Lincoln County.
I suppose so, if, if Dr. Silvernail felt comfortable with those guidelines. I do know that last year there were differences in what health directors across the state were doing in different counties.
See, Dr. Silvernail might not even be familiar with Lincoln County.
Correct, correct, you know. Again, I know that he was talking to other state health directors throughout last year.
Right.
Caroline?
Just a couple of, well, one question and just one concern. On page 14, when it talks about maintain a dedicated space to isolate symptomatic individuals who become ill, those are likely to be children who can't drive.
Correct.
And obviously, this is, we've done this forever. When a kid is sick, they go into a room and then there's an adult and they're supervising them while somebody's trying to reach a caregiver or parent to come pick them up. I did hear last year from a couple of employees that it felt, it was frightening. This is prior to vaccine, but it was frightening for them to be in there. And so I would hope that we would have enough of the full range. It talks on the next page about PPE, the full range of PPE available to our adults who are supervising all the way up to N95, whatever they're comfortable wearing and they can tolerate.
And again, that is one difference. Last year, they wanted the individual in the room. This year, I believe it's again, more flexible and it just says where they can monitor them. So as long as the room had, you know, something, they could potentially be monitoring from outside of the room. But again, we have stressed all throughout last year, if you need other gear, if you're running out, we have that, please order it. And we will continue to reiterate that with our principals and our nurses.
The full range of PPE.
Right, yes.
And now it's a lot more available than it was.
Right.
I know we've spoken about this, so I imagine y'all have stocked up on the full range of PPEs because if you have more than one child in there, who, if you're at a big school, it's possible to have more than one symptomatic child in a room at a time. There's certainly a possibility of an adult needing to go in there and certainly those two children, like one could have asthma and one could have COVID. They both look the same.
Right.
We don't want this, you know, we don't want being in a room together to transmit. So just making sure there are enough, enough masks on hand to make sure we reduce the transmission, if that's the route we choose to go. I wanted to ask you a follow-up on the question about this toolkit. So I know that the decision about whether or not to require a mask or not is strongly recommended in the toolkit, but it's not required like it was last year in the toolkit. Are there, we basically still have to follow the toolkit when it says required, right?
Well, I don't know that there's any places that it says required. It's all should, should, should.
Except for quarantine rules.
Quarantine, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
That's my point.
Yes, yes. Now, we do have to certainly, you know, follow. Again, each time we talk with, we talk with Dr. Silvernail or his staff, his communicable disease nurse, we, we kind of have the scenarios. She and I had talked about outlining the basic scenarios. Most schools between their nurses, COVID contacts and administrators are pretty familiar with the basic scenarios. But to, to Anna Barrett's question earlier, sometimes there's some little thing that's different, even though we, we get it down and then we're calling. Anytime that we're in question, we call and talk to them through that. But yes, these are required until he gives us any kind of leeway to, to change that.
Right, and I think, I think we were pretty pleased with how that went last year in terms of our work with Dr. Silvernail and his team in terms of suppressing the level of transmission within our schools. That's why we were able to stay open the whole year, unlike many other districts in our state.
Correct, and we have very few cases where we even, there was even possible transmission. And even those cases often had an outside factor that we believed was more likely than in-school transmission.
So that system has worked well and there's no reason to think it won't continue to work well.
Correct.
Madam Chair, I think I've got the student down pat. Pretty much we've gotten more lenient on the quarantine. Go back to the explained adults, the staff, etc., where we're going to do that. So make sure I get a clear understanding of adult quarantine.
So if, for adults, if you're vaccinated and you're not symptomatic, then you would not need to quarantine. However, our adults that have not chosen to be vaccinated for whatever reason, again, many might have good reasons for that, if they were in that six feet, it's still in the toolkit recommends that adults try to maintain that six feet of distance with children, particularly if unvaccinated. So it's just the vaccination, if you're vaccinated, you will not have to quarantine as frequently unless you would have symptoms.
So what I am, think I am hearing, and I want to make sure as we progress, if we choose to go with the mask route, we're more likely to keep more students in, in school because they won't be likely to be quarantined.
Correct.
Correct, on that statement. All right, thank you.
And we've already seen that in just having two schools open.
Right.
I have a question for, about how many of our staff do we have that have taken the vaccine? Yeah, percentage-wise?
We think we're in the neighborhood of 70 to 80. We are actually collecting information on how many staff members are vaccinated. Either a yes, no, or a part to tell. We're collecting that information, just so we do know. Because that assume, at some point, we may be able to use that information if we want to, at some point, get rid of these masks with our staff members, hopefully shortly.
So we're looking at roughly between 75 and 80% or 70 and 80?
When we had the original sign-ups, we were at 70%. We don't know people have gotten vaccinated since. That's what, we don't know the exact number or even a fair estimate. We think again, 70 to 80%, so we're going to try to collect that information.
But that's good.
I think, I think as a whole, teachers and staff members, school people have gotten vaccinated at a much higher rate than the rest of the community.
Right.
Any other questions? Okay. All right. Thank you, Karen.
Can we change the order?
Yes, we absolutely can.
Can we actually go down? Mr. Johnson, if you're next door, would you come over, please? Can we start at the facilities update? And work our way back up two or three things you need to hear before. If we can get back to SEL at the end of this meeting or at the, at the board meeting itself, or would you hear the facilities update? Have Jeff Smith do a server data, data security update as well. It's wrong that I'm not, you quit, sorry.
Oh, Aaron.
Oh, Aaron, there he is. I think you.
We'll start with you, Matt, and we'll go back up. You, you and Aaron, very bottom, facilities update.
Thank you for being flexible.
All right, good afternoon. In your package was a list of all those projects that we completed this summer. But I'm just going to highlight three of them. One would be AG Cox, the classrooms, the sixth classroom wing adjacent to the gymnasium was renovated this summer. The classrooms are complete and ready for staff and students. The contractor is ongoing on the two-story wing. A mason should start either today or tomorrow, weather depending on the corridor hallways on the second floor. So that's a pretty big step, starting block on the second floor. As far as CMX goes, the fire marshal is doing his inspection right now on the 1955 two-story wing from the storm damage section. And all the other, as far as the building inspections go, building, plumbing, electrical, mechanical, they're all complete. So it's just depending on the fire marshal inspection, which is happening right now. And then wall coats, the fire marshal inspection is scheduled for Wednesday. All the building inspections are complete that are supposed to be by now. I say that because the gas piping for the heat will be done before October 10th, which the contract allows for. But that project is pretty much cleaned up and staff are back in the building. So any questions on those three items?
As always, amazing amount of work is getting done in facilities over the summer. I don't think you all sleep. I know I've seen y'all on roofs on Sundays, so anyway, during the summer, it's not a great place to be. Thank you for all, thank your whole team for working so hard to get this done in the summer.
Matt's got something to add to it, I believe? Yes, no? Do you have, no, he's good, we're good. Anything else? All right, so we'll go to Jeff next.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Today, I just want to give you a little bit of a update of some of the things we're doing in technology to strengthen our defense against cyber attacks. Last couple of years, we've been having, we've had several network security audits done where they analyze our, our security of our network. And that's several steps. It's people trying to get through our firewall to get into our network. And also they look at our policies and procedures inside of our network so far as user accounts and things of this nature that, where we could have vulnerabilities. So based on those analysis, we've done some things. The first thing would be firewall strengthening. The firewall is that device that keeps outside people from getting into our data. But there are certain things that we have to have available to the outside world. So we've done analysis, taken the analysis that were given to us and made the holes in the firewall smaller, if you will. So if only DPI needed to get to a certain server, then that's the only ones even get to a login prompt for that server. The rest of the people can't even get to it. So just sort of tightened up the holes in the firewall. Second thing we've done recently is we now have a third backup of our data that is in the cloud. You know, several years ago, we set up a DR site and we have two backups of our data and that was great. But now the hackers have gotten better and they can actually find those backups in our network and infect those as well. So now we have a third backup that is off-site in the cloud and not directly accessible from our network. So if we do get hit with ransomware, that third backup is protected. So we have that to fall back on. Another thing we've done recently is Google two-factor authentication. Most of you probably are familiar with that, but if you're not, two-factor authentication just requires a user to not only know their pass, their user ID and password, but also have a physical device on their person to identify them. And that device normally is your cell phone. So a user logs into their email and they put in their user ID and password and it says, now enter this six-digit code that I just sent to your phone. And that really makes a very strong authentication method. And in fact, it's so good that we're using Google authentication for other applications in the district because it gives that, that two-factor with the device makes it very secure. Another thing we've been doing recently is training. And this is big. I mean, how do you get infected with ransomware? Human error. Somebody clicks on something they shouldn't. So we now are doing monthly, things are going out to all our staff members saying, hey, take this training and they get little tests they have to take after they watch the videos. And it's just to help get them to recognize those things they should not click on. Or an email from Dr. Linker that says, from superintendent551@gmail.com. That's not Dr. Linker. So that, you know, training is very important. And one of the last things that we've done recently, we're doing this summer, and this one actually for staff is a little bit painful. And we're de-privilaging accounts. Let me explain what that means. In the past, when a teacher logged into a computer, she was given access to certain network resources that she was allowed to get to. But they were given total access to that computer, like an administrator. And they could install an application or a driver or something of that nature. The problem is if those, if that person's credentials get compromised, then somebody from the outside world could install a program, a bad program on a computer, that program can find other computers and install itself and those could find other computers. And as you can see, within minutes, something could spread across our entire network. So now, no user pretty much in the, in the district has the right to install something directly on their computer. If they need something installed, they're going to have to ask technology to do it. And my technicians, their accounts are de-privileged as well. So we purchased some, an application to track all of our passwords for every one of our computers in the district. And it uses Google two-factor authentication to allow access to those passwords. And those passwords change every 24 hours. So it really gets, and they're not the same. Every computer has a totally different password. So it gives us a really strong way of preventing that spread of a bad program in our district. Now, that's just a few things we've been doing. But every day, I've got one engineer probably spends 50% of his time working on just security. So it's a subject that we keep in the forefront and we're working on continuously. But these are just a few of the highlights of things we've done recently to strengthen our defense. And I want to take any questions, anybody has any?
Caroline?
I just want to say thank you. I've, I've certainly had a couple of folks in our school system express, you know, concerns about what it is that we're doing to protect our students and staffs, identifiable information. And I really appreciate getting this update on that, and I will pass that on to them in case they're not listening today. I do think it's really important, and, you know, it's more, we're in a, we're in a cyber world, you know, and it's, we're going to probably need to invest more and more resources, human capital, as well as technological inputs. And I'll also say, to protect our student data and our, and our employee data, I will also say, I really actually enjoy the trainings. I don't know what the other people on the board think, but I have to do the same sort of trainings for work, and the product that you all, you all have chosen for, as our training vehicle is a lot better. It's at least more fun and entertaining than, than what we do in healthcare. So thank you for that.
Way to be pleased.
Very effective.
Another thing to go along with this, just say two, two things, actually, we have doubled our cybersecurity insurance this year. So that, that would help us out a lot if we do get into a situation to have the insurance company help us there. We have also been working with our risk manager, who helped us create our, our crisis manual. And we have created a page, which will be going out this fall, to what do you do if you got a suspected ransomware come up? So there's, this will be in our crisis manual flip chart, so you can go right to it. Here's the steps you need to do for, you know, first do this, second do this, make sure these guys know. So it'll be at everybody's hands, where they can go, go straight to it. There won't be any concern about not doing the right thing, as it'll be spelled out for them. So this is some other things that we're continuing to do to help cybersecurity throughout the district.
Thank you so much. It's, it's so important that both our staff and our families trust our ability to keep their data, especially that of their students, private, and only available to those who must see it. Thank you.
All right.
Any questions?
Any other questions?
I would say that on your assembly account, if you, if you look under other supporting documents, you'll see a list of about twenty other major products that Matt Johnson and his team have handled over the summer, from fire alarms to additional roofs, to, I could read them all, there are a whole bunch right there for you, but there's a whole bunch that they're finishing up now.
Okay, we're going to jump to Dr. Lassiter. Thank you, guys.
We'll be back.
I know.
Good morning to, it is afternoon. Feels like morning. Good afternoon to everyone, and just want to take a moment and share what we did for four days with our principals, assistant principals, and instructional coaches, preparing for our students and our teachers to return. About three years ago, we began having two sessions for summer leadership conference for our principals. In June, we had the twenty-third and twenty-fourth, and twenty-third and twenty-fourth, those days in June always focused traditionally on curriculum. And then on, in August, the fourth and fifth, those days focus on leadership. And so I'll just briefly share with you how we took a very different approach this year. And if we could click on where it says sessions, just to share real quick, that first session in June, the twenty-third and twenty-fourth, we had an actual conference where we had principals and district staff present, and principals were able to register for the sessions that they felt that they needed most, in nine, in non-focused areas that I will share with you at the end. If we pause right there for just a moment, you will see that our digital learning department did a session on blended learning. So how do you blend in face-to-face instruction and the technology? So we had a session there. High-quality classroom walkthroughs by Dr. Paul Brony and Darryl Thomas, who is our principal of the year. And then we had a number of other sessions that principals could register for. They could sign up and attend those sessions. And embedded in these sessions were things that were aligned with our strategic plan, and areas of focus that would help students and teachers strengthen areas when they return today, actually, last Friday. All right? So the twenty-third and twenty-fourth, those were the agendas there. And then on the fourth and fifth, we had an agenda. So if you'll click on the fourth and fifth. The twenty-third and twenty-fourth, it was two days of those sessions. We did have Clinton Todd speak on June the twenty-third, who is our current teacher of the year. And then we had Dr. John Almerod, who is a professor at James Madison University, speak on the twenty-fourth. He was phenomenal. Both of them were great. And then this is our focus on leadership, which was about two weeks ago, focusing on engage, elevate, and empower. And Coach Mike Houston was one of our guest speakers to sort of energize us and get us going. And Karen Harrington, Emma, and a few others on the team did some phenomenal presentations. And then Dr. Roone, she came in with her team and provided some human resources support in terms of sometimes having to make sure that we're following processes and procedures and policies. And then on day two, Darryl Thomas, who was our current principal of the year, he spoke with us and gave us some encouraging words. And the focus there was our traditional principals meeting. Our principals were there, our assistant principals were there, and our instructional coaches were there. So you can see from that agenda, all the sessions that took place, which was, it was a full day. So we did four days, two in June, two in August, of just, it was just completely full of activities to get everyone focused on the year. So we'll go back to our presentation. Thank you, Ms. Franklin. So next year, our tentative dates that we share with our principals was June twenty-second and twenty-third, and August the second and third, we asked them to save those dates fairly early, so that we can all be on deck, and we can be on the same page in preparing for the school year for our students and our teachers. The next thing, we talked with our principals and teachers, our principals and assistant principals about was our strategic plan and our profile of a learner. Ms. Johnson had some folders that were QR codes that were inside, where the teachers can scan the strategic plan and profile of a learner. And the principals actually have packets, a number of them have them today, where they went back to their school, and the objectives that I shared with you, and Dr. Linker has shared with you, they are sharing those same objectives. Dr. Roone and I, before we came here, stopped to see Allison Covington, and she went through and said, this is what we're doing, this is how it aligns with our strategic plan, and this is how it aligns with the non-focused areas that you'll see shortly. And we were just excited and beaming that we had that alignment in such a huge district, and our principals took it to heart. So the schools have this, our teachers will know what our strategic plan is, they will know how it integrates with our profile of a learner, and all of this will be done, hopefully, in our schools this week with trainings at our, at our school sites. And then I share with you our non-focused areas. And this is to really help us reset and refocus, reset and recover focus areas, which is what we called it in June with our principals, is how do we get everyone coming back to school, reset, refocus, re-energized, and ready to go this school year? And so we came up with, in actually this room, nine focus areas that we believe would really help, one, with job embedded professional development for our teachers, and building teacher capacity. We know the research supports that when teachers' capacity and teachers work collaboratively, and they work together, that is what improves teacher-student data and performance. So one of the things is, as I share with you, blended learning. So we're integrating the technology into instruction. That's one area that we're focusing on. School improvement, how do you take your school and make it better? I believe Ms. Ford did a presentation on that. Equity and excellence, and let me clarify, we are, while we're saying equity, we are not talking about taking something from someone else and giving it to someone else. We are talking about, in terms of equity, looking at all of our areas in this school system to make sure that every child, regardless of race, gender, whatever else, that they get what they need to be the best that they can be in our system. All right? So also looking at instructional rounds, going around and going to classrooms and looking at peers and supporting peers, professional learning communities. That is where we're looking at teacher collaboration, capacity building of our teachers. That's where teachers are working together in groups. Multi-tier systems of support, which is what Ms. Carrington, I think, will talk about a little later in positive behavior interventions. Our principals getting in classrooms and walking in classrooms, learning focus with how we plan instruction. How do you plan high-quality instruction? And what is our common way that we expect our staff and our teachers to plan instruction across the district, so that it's streamlined, so that when John comes from this side of town, and he comes to this teacher, they're not in two different places, that they have a uniform way of providing that quality instruction. And then lastly, sort of what you've kind of alluded to earlier in our meeting, is our human resources leadership. How do we support our teachers with following through with policy? How do we follow through with processes? How do we follow through with systems? And Dr. Roone and her team did a three and a half hour, she probably could have used a bit more time, in that area with our principals reinforcing what expectations are when it comes to following policy and procedures in the district. And to make sure that we're ready for our students when they come back next week, and to make sure that we were ready for our teachers returning Friday and today. So we have a very strong, solid roots, some solid roots in getting ready for our students to come back, and some roots to make sure we're supporting our teachers in the best way we can, to make sure that we continue to raise achievement and close academic gaps. So, questions?
Good? Great. Thank you for your hard work. I really appreciate all that you do for us. Preston?
Good afternoon to the board. I'll bring you an easy one.
Promise?
Promise. We can get behind this one easily. My Future NC, have you seen any of the commercials or billboards? They've been around for a couple of years. Began as a commission in two thousand seventeen, but then formed, transitioned to a nonprofit in two thousand nineteen. And really is seeking to align, and if you've ever had a car that's been out of alignment, you know what, what good alignment means. Align our efforts in the state from pre-K up through post-secondary education, to get our workforce where it needs to be to support North Carolina's economy. And I do believe that's something we can easily get behind. In this draft resolution, you'll see the basics of what My Future NC stands for as a nonprofit in that alignment, but also the goal, very aggressive goal they've set. I believe in two thousand nineteen, they estimated there were one-point-three-million North Carolinians who had either a credential or a post-secondary degree. And by twenty-thirty, they want to see us able to supply North Carolina's workforce with two million workers. Okay? Again, this aligns with everything we're doing in our strategic plan, from pre-K to preparing kids for college through their reading levels, reading abilities, to those credentials earned through their career technical education courses, really the whole picture, and getting our business community and our universities, our community colleges, and our school systems working together toward that goal. So, that's all I have for you.
So you're asking for this to be put on consent agenda for September, is that correct?
Yes, please.
Okay. Any issues with that?
The only thing that I would say, Madam Chair, is since we do have an audience today, we don't usually have an audience in our workshops. This is a tremendous, tremendous opportunity for us to continue to express our support for our young people to be equipped and prepared for the jobs of tomorrow. And part of that, all, a part of that is the career technical education that we continue to stress here in Pitt County. I've been so proud of this board, and I've been very, very, very proud of Dr. Linker, and everybody involved with it, Preston, including you and others that have promoted how important it is.
Beth Ann Trueblood.
That we have, that's right, that we have, that we have a strong career technical education component to our school system.
Yes, sir.
And I'd also like to echo that. That marketable credential, something that's really meaningful, should be a pathway available to every single one of our students. And I think we need to recognize our business and industry, in our communities, for partnering with us, and the work of all of that team, because we can't do that without them. A lot of that is hands-on learning, and being a part of learning a trade or a skill, and very appreciative of that leadership, and what it means to our students, because a lot of students, whether they're going to college or not, they have, all of them need something that they can use upon graduation as a leg up for whatever it is they choose to do. And that marketable credential, that is really important piece of that. But thank you.
Okay. At this time, I'm going to adjourn this meeting, and our next-